Good afternoon. The CMCS School Board Study Session for October 8, 2024 is now in session. First item on the agenda is Governor Policy Review. Dr. Luna?
I'll turn this over to Mr. Nolan, Mr.?
Well, Erin originally had to request that this be put on the agenda.
You want to speak? Okay, go ahead.
September 9, 2003, the school board implemented the current board policy model. That delegates the majority of the policymaking authority to the directors of schools and to the district. Since this time, the far majority of policies have been made by the district. I knew our board operated differently before I came on the school board, but I didn't realize to the degree in the reality that the board lacked authority over policies. When a new board member comes on, they receive training from TSBA about the roles of a board member. Most of the training centers are around policymaking. After the training, I came back excited and enthused, thinking maybe I was wrong. That information I received about our authority over the policy was that maybe it was incorrect. Then I went to Mr. Nolan and had a discussion with him to desire to change the policy to only get told I did not have the authority. The school board exists to have oversight, checks and balances by the people of a community to the government entity, which is the school board. We are to ensure the accountability to the public, to act as a bridge between the community and the school district, ensuring that the school meets the community's education needs and values. My belief in 2003, that when the decision was made to move our current board governance policy, that the board essentially handed over the primary responsibility to the school district. Now, I do understand that there's an argument that if we have oversight over a specific policy, that the governance policy has executive limitations in place so we can have authority over a policy. We have these in place in some areas like financial administration, asset protection, rezoning, just to name a few. Now, though, the executive limitations have a unique situation. In Tennessee, we have a partisan school board races. And for the political party not in the majority, it's obvious that if something comes up that is partisan in nature, you won't have the votes to get executive limitations. Previously, I've been in the political minority on this board. I'm now in the political majority. As a person that's been the political minority for the last two years, I don't believe it's right that the policy changes can be held by a political majority. We all should have the ability to speak to any policy as an elected official representing our districts. Furthermore, the executive limitations do not fix the ability for a board member to that cannot speak into all policies under our current governance policy, just the ones with executive limitations. Thus, the majority of what we do seems to me to be rubber stamping what comes before us. Now, before I get, before we get into any specific things, I know we've asked TSBA to come up and speak, so I'm going to invite them to come up and share what they'd like to share tonight, and then I do have a few questions after their presentation.
Yeah? Oh, red, I'm hot, good, good. Thank you so much for asking us to come and speak to you tonight about being one of our members of the association. We provide several services. One of the services we provide to our member boards is policy services. Our policy service is somewhat different from the policy method that this board has chosen, which we were asked tonight to come to explain how our policy services works. By law, the board is the authority in policymaking. Your superintendent by law is to carry out those policies and can do so by creating and adopting administrative procedures to carry those policies out. We have pretty much every district in the state, except about maybe, how many, Jennifer?
Three, six.
Six. There's 141 districts. We do pretty much every district in the state's policy. And I'm going to, Jennifer is our Director of Policy Services and Staff Attorney that heads up all of our policies, but we provide customized policy services to each school board. So, we have a base policy manual, and then from that, if your board chooses to use our service, we take your current policies. We have attorneys that read through each policy. We make sure your policies adhere to state law, federal law, state board rules and regs. And then, you know, there's language in every school board's policy that's up to this board unless it violates some law. But I'm going to ask Jennifer to just briefly talk to you about what she does on a daily basis and how that process works with our service. Jennifer?
Hello. Happy to be here speaking to you guys today. Like Tammy said, I'm our Director of Policy Services. I've been in that position about nine years. Just about every year, we have a board that votes to have us review their policy manual holistically. What that looks like on our end is we are checking for consistency, clarity, and legality, right? And we send recommendations, drafts back to the board. We correspond back and forth. Our goal is to show you where the boundaries are by state law, right? So you have a packet in front of you, or I believe Mr. Griffey does. We keep track of all of the times state and federal law says you have to have a policy. When it says an LEA, right, shall adopt a policy on, we keep track of that. We update it every year. We work with school boards across the nation. Every state has a school board association like us. We frequently collaborate together on what policies, you know, what are best practices? What language is most helpful to boards? And we approach this task in the nature of trying to highlight areas where you have discretion, right? It's helpful to know what the law says you have to do. It's also really helpful to know where you have discretion, where you have authority, where you can really be flexible. So you'll see in that packet in front of you, there's examples like AI, right, artificial intelligence. State law says, go create a policy on it. They don't really tell you what it has to include. So we work with our partners in other states to come up with best practices. We share drafts back and forth, and then we send you our recommendation. And then it's up to the board to decide if they want to adopt it, if you want to change it, if there are specific concerns in your district that you want to tailor it toward. There's other times where state law says you have to include these 13 points on bullying in your policy, and there's not a lot of discretion. So we make sure to highlight that as well. So our process looks like reviewing every single document, line by line. We check for any redundancies, you know, flag something if, you know, a policy in Section 3 conflicts with a policy later in Section 5. We want to let you know, and then put it to you. You know, which one do you actually go by if we were to find an inconsistency like that? So we take our responsibility seriously, and that's the framework we use. We want to show you where you can use discretion, where the law provides some limitations or guidance in certain places. And yeah, that's, that's how we work on it. Typically, a review can take six months or longer, depending on, on how, how big the project is, frankly, how lengthy the documents are. But we have attorneys on staff who go through that and then work in a collaborative process to provide recommendations. Oh, sure, absolutely. So once we do that, once a board approves, for example, I'm working with Dyer County right now, different district, right? There's very big differences across the state of Tennessee. Dyer County is not close to here, but I'm reviewing their policy manual line by line. I'm sending them drafts. When they send them back to me and say, hey, the board adopted these 50 documents, whatever it is, we review those changes, right, again, a second time to see if there are any legal inconsistencies or areas they may want to clean up. We also host them online for the district, so it's easy for them to just link to that. We've also worked with our web developers to make sure we have ADA compliance in all of those website accessibility features. Yeah, that's another great point, thank you. We've also added a new feature. All of the citations in our policy manuals are clickable. So that means that, like, if you want to know, hey, does the law really say we have to include these things, you can look at the citation, click on it, and see for yourself. It can be really helpful for the community, for staff, to also have that legal reference readily available. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to turn it back over to Tammy if she has anything to add.
Mr. Mayberry?
I do have a few questions, but first, before I say that, I do want to say, I've been saying earlier that what I, everything I said tonight, the comments you're filling says no bearing on our current district team and our director, current director of schools. I believe we have an incredible director of schools with a great team that does a fantastic job and have operated this school system with excellence. This, this framework has existed for 21 years, but I want to thank them for all they've done there. And who writes the policies is less important to me as well, just that we have the final say and authority over policies. So that's, I feel like, after this discussion, Mr. Griffey, that we maybe take this to our board retreat to have a deeper discussion and then maybe vote on next month. That's, that's a recommendation from me. But how are the majority of school boards across our state set up in regards to, like, our model versus other models?
I know Tammy can speak to this.
You're across the different states or just this state?
This state.
You're the only board that uses the policy governance model.
And what's the main difference between the two?
The main difference is, we believe the policy governance pretty much gives up the authority of the board and delegates it to the superintendent. And we don't think that's how the law's set up. The law specifically states that the school board is the policymaking body, and we just, that's how our process has always worked, and that's how it works pretty much nationwide. There are a few states that have a few school boards that do. I know you've asked me that question.
That was my next question. How many, how many states, I'm sorry, how many school boards across our nation have the current model that we have?
Yeah. I've got that over there in my purse. I emailed it to you, and I left my phone over there, but there are, like, I'm going off the top of my head. We surveyed, because you asked me this question, we probably had, I think, I don't know if you have that in front of you where I sent it to you, the 15 states that responded. I think, like, Georgia had one school board. There were a few states that just had one school board. The states that I'm recalling off the top of my head that had multiple, Vermont and Wyoming, they didn't give me a number, but they said several state, school boards in those states use policy governance.
According to your email, what you sent me, Alabama did not have any. Alaska had one. Colorado had 25. Connecticut had two that were loosely using it. Florida had none. Georgia had one. Idaho, none. Indiana, none. Iowa, no school board using it. Maine, none. North Dakota had one. New York has none. Oregon has one. Tennessee has us. Texas has one. Vermont has a number of them that uses it. Virginia, none. And Wyoming has several that use it, is what you said.
So I surveyed, I asked all the states to respond, but that's the only ones that responded back to our, our survey.
So in the past, when I, we've talked about this topic, it's been brought up that if we change the policy governments, that our board would be doing things that weren't necessarily our, in our business to do, like going up on roofs and looking at AC units or looking at roofs. In other words, decisions that are more minor that the district should, should be doing. Is that true? And what scope would a board be actually looking at if the model changed?
I don't think going to this model is going to say that your job is to go on to roofs. I mean, the board has one employee, which is the superintendent. The superintendent hires and fires all employees that do those jobs. The, the, the role of the board as the governing body is to develop a set of policies that are your guidelines for the district. Here's a big picture overview of how we want this system to work, and then you give the authority to implement those policies, and this is by law, to implement those board policies is given to the director of schools. So the board's power is through policy, and that's stated in law.
Yeah, and my goal ultimately would not be market management, but of the day to day, that's not at all, but the more big picture policies is the things I'm concerned about. I appreciate your time.
Yes.
Ms. Berry? No, no, Ms. Casey, Casey Bryant, you cut yours off for some reason.
I did, because it was flashing.
We're supposed to flash.
Go ahead.
My question is, what would be the cost for TSBA to formulate our policies for us instead of our staff, our director of schools?
Sure, I can speak to that. So we have a flat fee basis for this. You would be on the upper end of that. We do it based on the size of the district. So it'd be the upfront cost of $19,500 for something that could take up to three attorneys, right, six months or more. That's all in, that's any draft revisions. If it takes you two years to get through the process, the price doesn't change. That also includes a free year of maintenance. We charge a maintenance fee if the district would like to continue on with us hosting, receiving recommendations. So a free year of maintenance is included in that. After that, it would be $8,000 going forward. There's a sample in the packet in front of you of the type of recommendations we send, typically as soon as possible at the end of the legislative session. As y'all know, not only does the state board make regulations and policy changes, the federal legislature, the Congress and the Senate make changes, and our state House and Senate make changes, right? So we're keeping up with federal changes, local changes, court cases, and sending out updates about how that impacts policies. So you're getting that information in a timely fashion. We're sitting through state board meetings multiple times a year, taking notes, sending out updates. We send summaries of what the laws are. Like I said, our approach is, here's the law, here is our, you know, interpretation of it. We're not taking a position, we're saying this is what the law says. We're giving you a summary. We're linking to the law for you so you can see for yourself. We're sending a, what we believe to be best practice recommendation in a model policy that you can tweak, adopt, email us back and forth with drafts 10 times if you would like. We're also happy to create new policies. If you have a novel issue come up, we'll draft something for you, work with staff, however you want to have that happen, however your needs may arise. It's one flat fee, and we are available basically as much as you need us. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bryant?
Thank you. I just, I have two questions. The first one is, do we know, who wrote our current policy? I know it's been a long time. Did we go through a company like this to do our first policy?
No, we went through Stepsky. Stepsky Foundation actually helped us put the policy together.
So there are several organizations that do policy creating? Okay. And then my other question is, when is the last time? I know it's been a really long time. When's the last time our policy, we've done a full analysis of our current policy and made changes?
To do a full analysis? I don't think that we actually sat down and did a full analysis of what our policy looked like, but each year, every time that there's a law change, the director and her staff, they come up with recommendations and they bring it before the board.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Is anything that the policy governors, this board is doing right now, is against the law?
Personally, when the law says that LEA shall adopt a policy on a topic, we recommend that the board adopt a policy on that topic, and those policies are listed in the packet in front of you. So state and federal law, there are some laws that differ for counties, cities, special school districts. There's about 70 times that the law says you need to have a policy on a very specific thing. So I would challenge you to look at your current manual and make sure you have all those.
That's not the question that I asked. I asked, is anything that we're doing under policy governance, which is monitoring and giving the director the authority to actually make sure that all of our policies are up to date? Anytime that there's a law come down, she bring recommendation to the board for either additional, whatever the case might be. Is that, is anything that we're doing thus far against the law as it is written?
I would defer to your attorney on that matter. My thought personally is that when the law says you need to adopt a policy on something, I don't know that that's a delegable duty.
It's not a delegable duty, but the bottom line is, okay, I'm not going to ask.
And we're not here to, we were asked to come.
I know you were.
And present our policy services. We don't, we're not expertise, have expertise in policy governance. We've not reviewed your policy governance, what I think you call them ends and means. You've not asked us to do that, so we're, we can't answer if you all are in line with policy when we've not reviewed what you have in place. So obviously, what you've been doing for years, no one's questioned it. We're not here to question it. We were here, we were asked to come to present our services, and whatever you all want to do, that's up to the board.
Right, there's one person that's really concerned about this, but there, but I just, my concern is, is anything that we're doing against the law? And the fact that we, if we ask you to do this, you say that upfront, this is going to be $19,000 for, for the, for the policy to be rewritten, and then $8,000, is that an annual fee or that is?
Yes.
Okay, so from then on, there's another $8,000. For, for over 20 years, we have been operating, less than 20, I would say, operating under policy governance. We've been all over the world. People have watched what we are doing. People have given us finances and stuff like that. The bottom line is, everything that we have done within the policy, with everything, every, every rule that we have set within policy governance has been scrutinized by our attorneys, by our directors, by her staff, to make sure that what we are doing is in com, is in compliance with the laws that are coming out of Nashville, Tennessee. And I have no respect for those people down in Nashville, for very few of them. I have very little respect for those people down there in the first, and you know, Tammy, you know me, I'm going to say what I got to say. But the bottom line is, my only concern to the board members up here is that the question about policy governance, when I first came on, and yes, we, we did have board members walking up on roofs, trying to see if, if the unit was going to last another five years, but they weren't qualified to do it. But they were, because they were on that committee, they were actually going around to all the schools doing that. We have a team now that actually does that. They were worrying about what color the walls in the schools were going to be. Board members was doing that kind of stuff. Didn't make no sense, because bottom line is, you know, each school got their own colors. So the bottom line now, we have teams to do that. So the bottom, I don't see what the problem is, but he might, I don't think partisan, I think that we are in this for the children, and being in it for the children, I think that if it's not broke, why we want to fix it. Ms. Bryant?
Yeah, I just kind of want to second Erin. This was one of the things that I ran on as a school board member, because there was a lot of scrutiny with the current policy. And maybe not scrutiny in how things are being done, but some people are not very clear on exactly what, what we have authority to do versus what the director of schools has the authority to do. So I'm a big fan of making sure that everything is very clear and the boundaries are laid out, and I think that it's a lot better to move forward that way when we all know we're all on the same page moving forward. So I do second Erin. He's not the only one that has a concern over this. I will say also, I've sat in school board meetings for four years, five years now, and it was very confusing to me as an observer and a parent as to what exactly the school board does, because the longest meeting that I sat and watched with the school board conversating about important topics was on what we were going to name a school. And so as a parent, seeing these things happening in these schools, I just, I would just like to say that it is worth taking a look at and seeing if there is a way that we could do it better is all.
Next, anyone else? Erin?
Yeah, I just want to say, I didn't say anything we were doing is illegal. That's not my intention about today. It's, if this is fundamentally how we should operate. Again, you mentioned roofs, wall colors, not trying to get into the weeds of all that. As I already said, big ticket things that we are supposed to be, policy decisions that we're supposed to make, that the state says that we're supposed to make, I don't think we should be delegating those things. I feel like this board should be all together unified in voting on these big items. So not trying to get into the weeds of day-to-day operations. You, last comment you said, Mr. Garland was, it's not broken, not, we don't need to fix it. That's something that was echoed last year in our board retreat, and I said, then I'll say again today, I think it is broke, and I think we do need to fix it.
Your opinion. Anybody else? Mr. Griffey?
I'll be quick, but I want to say thank you to Tammy and her staff for coming down and making this presentation. I did request her to do this. I'm very appreciative that she did. The, I don't think anyone is concerned about us being not legal, because we have good attorneys on staff, have a good attorney hired by the board to keep us legal. It's not the subject at all. The subject that others are worried about is, have we not fulfilled our responsibility by suggestion of creating our own policies? So I appreciate your presentation, and, and sorry, it's been suggested that we discuss this further review, further in our fall retreat, and I think that'd be a good time to do it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Tammy. Next item on the agenda, surplus property, child nutrition, first read, Dr. Luna?
Board, in your packet, you will see a list of items from child nutrition per law. We are required to provide you with that list whenever we're looking at things that are surplus and deemed unusable at this point. So you have those items in your packet.
Okay. The second item, I mean, third item is TESA Accountability Update.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Doughty to, to present on our TESA Accountability Update.
Good evening, board. I'm excited to be here tonight. If you'll remember, we started this journey together last year, talking about TESA. So for those who are unfamiliar, TESA is the Tennessee Investment in Student Achievement. So I'll be reviewing with you what we've planned to submit in our plan for the 2425 school year. We will continue to have four goals, just like we started last year. The state of Tennessee dictates that ultimately they want us to have 70% of our third graders to be proficient in ELA or reading by the year 2030. We felt like that was a great baseline for us to continue to set our standard at CMCS S, because we always strive to be the best. So our goal number two is that 70% of our students in grade bands third through five, sixth through eight in high school will be proficient in ELA. We continue that with 70% of those same grade, grade bands being proficient in math. And then our last goal statement is that 70% of our graduating high school students will be identified as ready graduates by 2030. Now, here's the fun part, and let's talk about what that means. So the first goal was established by the state of Tennessee, and they actually give us a formula to help us or to tell us how to figure out what our proficiency goal each year will be. So let's talk about where we've been and where we're going. As you can see, over the course of the last year, based on our results that our students just took this spring EOC, we saw 1.3% increase in our reading proficiency for our third grade students, and we think that is great positive momentum. Currently in CMCS S, 43.6% of our third graders are reading on grade level, and that exceeds the state results at 41%. With the mathematical equation, that makes our goal for this year being 49.8% of our students being proficient. So your next question probably is, how do you plan to accomplish that goal? So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that. We're going to continue our implementation of our ELA high-quality instructional materials. We've seen great success with our high dosage, low ratio tutoring for our at-risk students, and so we're going to continue to do that and ensure our teachers and educational assistants are trained in that. And then, as we spoke about last month, we're going to continue to use our data to hone in our, our students who have unique learning needs, to make sure that all of those students' needs are met, and continue our summer programming. It has been bigger and bigger every year, and we're very excited about continuing that summer programming work. Goal number two is going to be that 70% of our students in third through five, sixth through eight in high school achieve proficiency. Super excited to share some results with you here. As you will see, some positive momentum here. Currently in our third through five grade band, we saw an increase there from two years ago to the current year. We're looking at 44.4% of our students being proficient. Again, we're exceeding the state results, and you'll see that our goal for this year is 50.7. Really excited about the positive momentum with our middle school students, the proficiency there being 34.2%, exceeding the state, and our goal for the year is 42.5. Our high school students are scoring in, 45.8% of those students are scoring proficient on the ELA, EOC, we call them EOCs in high schools. We're exceeding- Um, we're exceeding the state results and our goal for the year is gonna be fifty-one point seven percent. How are we gonna accomplish that? Again, continuing to focus in on our high-quality instructional materials, ensuring we're meeting the needs of all of our very unique students here in C M C S S and with very focused and intentional summer programming for all of our students. Goal number three focuses on math, ensuring seventy percent of the students in those grade bands will be proficient in math by twenty thirty. So let's talk about some positive momentum here. You will notice that in our, our third through five grade band, um, we did not see the positive momentum we saw in other places. But truthfully, our focus there has been reading. Um, in third and fourth grade, we spent a lot of time ensuring that our reading instruction was on point due to the promotion or retention law. However, that gives us an area to improve on, which is something we're all excited about being able to do. But we did, um, meet the state, the state average there, so not too concerning for us. Please note that our middle schools, again, are seeing some really positive momentum there. We saw an increase of four point six percent of our students being proficient. Um, we did slightly exceed the state results there, and you'll see our goal is forty-two point four percent. High school math, again, positive momentum of four point four more percent of our students achieving proficiency there. And twenty-eight point one percent is the, um, the percentage of students who are proficient in high school math. The state has not released their results yet, the high school math, um, due to the standards changing. Those results just recently came out, they're hot off the press, and so they haven't released the state results yet. But either way, that sets our goal at thirty-five point three percent. Again, what are our action steps? We're only in year two of our high-quality, um, instructional materials for math implementation. So still a lot of work to do there to make sure that we're on point with our daily direct instruction. We're gonna continue to hone in on those interventions. Math interventions are very different than reading and E L A interventions. So doing the work there to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students and a focused, intentional summer programming. Goal number four is that seventy percent of our high school students will become ready graduates, um, by twenty thirty. So let's talk about that result. Um, we do have some positive forward momentum there as well, an increase of three point eight percent. We're looking at forty, um, percent of our students being ready graduates right now. The state results there are forty-three, and our goal for twenty-four, twenty-five is four point five percent. How are we gonna accomplish that? Looks a little bit different, um, than the others. We're gonna focus here on A C T. In order to become a ready graduate, truthfully, the easiest way to do that, um, is to get a twenty-one on your A C T. So we're gonna continue to refine our teacher practices at the high school level to make sure that we're able to support our students in achieving the twenty-one on the A C T. Um, we're gonna provide appropriate interventions for our students who are approaching that. Summer programming, um, to include A C T boot camps, those will also take place throughout the school year as well. And, um, to ensure we have ready graduate training for C T E teachers and school counselors so that we're all speaking a common language and ensuring all of our students have a path to become ready graduates. Um, so after year one and reflecting on the plan that we submitted to this board last year, some things that worked well for us last year were continuous progress monitoring. We used, um, formative and summative assessments, um, to ensure that we were moving in the right direction. And those reflections took place at the district and the school level. There are a lot of people responsible for this, including myself, amazing team, um, and amazing building level administrators. And we're gonna continue monitoring the data, looking for successes and ways that we can continue to improve our practice at least every four weeks, if not more. What questions do you have for me?
Mr. Mayberry?
Good job.
Thank you.
I had a question, A C T prep. My daughter is a senior this year, so actually, this is on my mind right now, so. I was told that there used to be a Clarksville High in A C T prep class, and there no longer is. I, I, as more I thought about that, as we talked about it, I just think they'd be a great idea across the district to have. So I didn't know if you had any plans, um, as we've, I know we've talked about it recently, but if you have any plans for like an elective class across the district for high schoolers for A C T?
Yes, sir, I'd love to speak about that. So the majority of our high schools do offer an A C T prep class. However, two of our seven high schools did decide to do A C T prep across their building through the twenty-five, uh, minutes skinny or enrichment period, depending on what they call it. And they invested in programs to do that work for every child, instead of it being a class that specific students went to. In addition to that, three years ago, we started giving all ninth and tenth grader, tenth grade students a practice A C T that mirrors the true A C T, and it actually gives students a printout that shows them the areas that they're great in and the areas that they need to improve. Um, and they can plug that into a program that we have called I X L and do that work independently at home. So we also have summer programming for, centered around A C T, and we have, um, things going on at schools, um, in the afternoon. So yes, um, we are gonna continue to push that out as an elective course. But I also wanted you to know all the other really great opportunities we have because of course, there's only certain kids that can fit that into their schedule, right? So we wanna make sure we have the opportunity to meet the needs of all the kids. Yes, sir.
Ms. Berry?
Shana proficiency for the state of Tennessee is what percent?
Well, it's a moving target, ma'am. Um, and a lot of times we don't even know, but our goal is, our goal as a district is to always have forty-five percent or higher of our students achieving whatever that moving target of proficiency is.
So what was the moving target this year?
I would have to get back to you and give it to you by grade band and subject.
Because I think if it's fifty percent, that's low. When I came here, forty percent was proficient. And Texas, eighty percent was proficient. And so as a instruct, a teacher, I was baffled. And I don't feel like, uh, fifty percent is enough for children to actually be, uh, ready. You know, our goal is for them to be college and career ready. But if they're only performing at fifty percent and that's proficient, for me, that is too low.
Yes, ma'am, I, I wanna be very clear that I don't said that. But I also can tell you, having spent time, um, reviewing the assessment items that are released, they never really release the full assessment. But the items that are released, there are some questions that are much more difficult than others. And I think a lot of times, the state also will decide to throw some questions out and keep some in based on performance. And so that's why that target changes. And either way, we, whatever target they set, we're gonna do the best we can to get there. Sorry, but I can get you that information.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, but I also would like to remind, uh, the board members that forty percent, fifty percent in Montgomery County could equal to eighty and ninety percent in some of these other states when we were talking about rigor and relevance. The, um, the amount of rigor and relevance that we put into the education system here in Montgomery County. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Item four, goal number one, improve academic performance while reducing achievement gap, Dr. Luna?
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Doughty to stay and, and Jennifer Manise to come up to discuss goal one.
Good evening. Um, we're here today to talk just a little bit more about improving student achievement. Improving academic performance while reducing achievement gaps using high-quality instructional materials and research-based math and literacy practices. In this district, when we plan and make, meet with teachers and make educational plans for students, we start with our standards, which is the what. And then we look at how well, what do we want the expectation at the end result to be? What do we want that to look like? And then we backwards plan, what do those lessons need to look like? How are we gonna get there? And what learning opportunities do we need to provide students in order to meet that how well measure? And so in our district, this is how we plan with teachers, this is how we meet with them. So when we start talking about the literacy vision.
So just like we talked about last time, how important it is to have that framework, and we talked about our unique learning needs vision, we also have one of those for literacy and math. So we'll start tonight by reviewing with the board, the C M C S S literacy vision. Um, our vision is, uh, of literacy is that all of our kids be writers, writers and thinkers who can utilize texts and tasks to deepen their knowledge, to think critically about things, solve problems and to make new ideas that will hopefully change the world. And so how do we do that? Well, we start with the curriculum. We're on year five of our E L A curriculum, um, adoption. So we feel very confident in that curriculum. Um, we also, um, have implemented explicit and systematic phonetics instruction for our primary grades, which is very important to make sure that they can read proficiently by third grade. And we have, um, purchased and implemented intervention materials for middle schools. In regards to the instruction, we continue to, to use the Instructional Practice Guide as our foundation. That's put out by the state of Tennessee as our foundation for what quality daily direct instruction should look like. We're excited that they have added a foundational skills I P G. And so we use that as a tool for our pre-K through second grade. Um, we have consulting teachers who support our teachers in grade level collaborations, and we have ongoing training in best-first instruction, which is a post-pandemic, um, manual about research-based strategies that work best for our kids. In regards to the assessments, we have professionally written E L A benchmark assessments that are given two to three times a year, and they, um, align to the Tennessee ready or E O C proficiency. So it's a great tool for us to use to continue to make sure we're doing the right work and to refine our daily instruction. We have district and school level data chats where we share data, um, we develop resources, we look for areas of concern, and we discuss successes and how we can replicate them across this district.
Okay, so for the math vision, our vision of mathematics is for all students to develop conceptual understanding, procedural skill, fluency, and the ability to strategically apply mathematical concepts in order to be critical thinkers and flexible problem solvers. And both of these visions came about through, um, principal feedback, teacher feedback, coach feedback. Lots of feedback went into the development of both visions. So when we go back to thinking about the triangle, we start with the what, which is always our standards. The curriculum and the instruction is, is the, is the what, what are we gonna do with it? So for math, we are in year two of that implementation of the high-quality instructional materials. In addition to that, we have revised state standards. So we have used teacher team feedback to update our curriculum guides, um, for teachers based on the previous year. We've also purchased manipulatives to get in the hands of elementary math students to complement that curriculum so that they have those hands-on experiences. For instruction, to further support that, we continue our learning math walks to provide feedback on those math instructional practices. We share where it's going well, and we share tips on how to improve. Consulting teacher support as needed through professional learning and collaborations. We have specific administrator training to ensure full implementation of the high-quality instructional materials. And we have ongoing training for best-first instruction strategies from the new classroom instruction that works. So for assessments with math, we also are using professionally written benchmark assessments two to three times a year that are aligned to Tennessee ten-ready proficiency. And we also do district and school level data chats to share data, develop areas of concern, and develop those resources for those areas of concern and learn from each other. This gives us an opportunity to highlight teachers that are doing things great and to help teachers that are maybe struggling in a particular area that we need to grow on. So for our first semester focus this year, it has been to continue that professional learning in both math and literacy practices for administrators, coaches and teachers to ensure students' individual needs are met. We support the monitoring of the data from the district benchmarks and universal screener and use that data to plan for instruction and our continuing professional learning. We continue training in best-first instruction strategies from the new classroom instruction that works. Our next steps will be to conduct feeder group learning walks for all administrators to observe math and E L A high-quality implementation, identify strategies with the greatest impact on student outcomes, share those strategies with other buildings, and continue our professional learning for all math teachers with the implementation of standards and adopted materials.
Do we have any questions? See, and I, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Item five, county commissioners, do you have any comments? Anybody else, anyone else have a comment at this time? Chris, Mr. Lanier?
I've been going over some stuff with the street department, and the reason I figured this out is because I actually sped in a school zone, coming off of, uh, Dunbar Cave onto Ross, or going off of, uh, Dunbar Cave onto Rossview. Uh, there's not adequate lighting in those, and I thought this would just be a time to bring those up. We have Madison Street that runs out of Clearview, that Barksdale School Zone, of course Dunbar Cave to Rossview, Hazelwood to Trenton, at Needmore, um, Needmore into Tiny Town at Barker's Mill. Again, these, these are where streets end into a, an active school zone. There is a sign there now, I did talk to the street department, there's a little tiny sign, about this big. And I had to go back and look for it because, I mean, there's so many signs down the road, you can't see them. But a simple, simple light up there, just like as in the others, I think should be noticed. South Jordan coming on to, into Cunningham Lane serves Minglewood and New Providence. Evans Road Lafayette to north, that goes to northwest. Little Bobcat has been opened up now off Tiny Town to South Cinceny. The gate's been removed, that handles at Barker's Mill. Needmore Road into Tiny Town off North Anderson Way, uh, which is Hazelwood Elementary. West Creek, uh, flowing off of County Trail, there's been, been some issues there. I think, I think, um, some people are already working on those, trying to stop the, the traffic flowing from city-owned property across school system property back to residential areas. There has been, an officer been on staff for, uh, I know, seven days in a row, working days from six A M to nine, nine A M has been the, the days that have been talked about. Cunningham Lane, um, has had ground pucks installed, which helps the students cross. Next week during the fall break, uh, Richview is also having those pucks installed. So that'll help some of our, um, students get to, get, get there safely. I know we've had a lot of sidewalks and everything put in, but I think these also need to be addressed and just wanted to bring those out in the open. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Here, now, and Dr. Luna?
I know, um, a few of us have a middle school football championship to get to that kicked off at six o'clock. Kenwood versus Richview over at Austin P. has some trophies to hand out. So we're excited to get over there, and to everyone else, I wish everyone, um, a restful and relaxing fall break. That's all.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.